It says they need to do the earliest they could do, September 25th for the D-SAD expansions.
Oh, okay.
So that's special meeting. We could probably do the 25th or...
It is the 25th. I thought we said it was the 25th.
Did we? We did. Okay.
Five o'clock.
All right, good. Then that works.
Okay. All right. Hold on here. I can't do anything until I pull up my stuff. All right, everybody. Agenda with backup, I don't need that. We don't need that. We have everybody. All right, are we ready to start? All right, I will call to order the SURA meeting for September 16th, 2019, and you need acceptance of the minutes from August 19th, 2019, please. Ms. Perazzo, second by Karen Zluskiewicz, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution 2019-11 to accept 92 properties from the city of Schenectady. Any discussion on that? We have it on the packet there. Any discussion? Motion to move? Ms. Perazzo, Ms. Karen Zluskiewicz, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Any other business coming before the meeting? Motion to adjourn. Second by Ms. Porfil, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, we're adjourned. Andrew, good job, my friend. Did you get all that?
(laughing).
All right, so we are gonna start, where are we going first? We're gonna do public safety first, and then we're gonna go down to city development planning. All right, so who do we have from public safety here? I know...
Yeah, me.
You.
Una Bear, who's not here.
And who's the other one?
Marion.
Marion, okay, thank you. Right here, my friend. On this side.
That side, that's not my good side.
I know, but that's my shooting handle.
Yeah, mine too. Thank you, everyone. There's three items on the agenda. The first one that we have is state home security grant for $179,985. This is an annual grant we receive. It's a tri-county grant, tri-city grant, with the cities of Albany, Troy, Schenectady, counties of Rensselaer, Albany, Schenectady counties. This year we're proposing to purchase portable radios to enhance the radio system, as well as computers for our police cars. There's a limited amount of funding for the computers and police cars. We're estimating at about 10 to 15 computers that we could buy. Portable radios is for accessories, is actually to complement some of the things that the county's doing with their bigger, bigger radio, radio projects, so. There's no match, any of these grants I'm asking for tonight, it's approval of, so.
I think these ones used to be used for storage, video storage. I know that that's a big cost with the slide cameras. In the future, should, you know, when we use it for additional storage, would this type of thing be allocated for that?
Not really. This is more for, not this particular grant, this is more for interoperability, such as communications between law enforcement, hence the radio systems, the computer systems and such. We're looking for grants out there. They're not really there yet. Federally, they sponsor monies for body cameras, but there's always a match to it, and that's how we came up with our match for our servers and such for storage. We constantly look for it. I don't see any right now for that, but we are looking. I also think it's so fresh with the body cameras that you're gonna see some monies open for it, because it's expensive for municipalities to do all that, so.
(inaudible).
It was very restricted for a long while. They just opened a drone project yesterday. There are some grants out there that, we actually recently applied for one. It's mirrored to our SWAT team, our special operations squad, that was part of, we haven't heard back on that one yet. That also is just starting to open. A lot of agencies had to invest their own funding at first, and then, but now I do see some grants coming that way. I just haven't seen one that's applicable to what we're, we have operationally so far. But again, we're, all these grants, the newer technologies, we're looking for funding, again, for a long time. They just cautiously held off on drones in particular. They wanted to see where it was going from a, from a public image standpoint, or acceptance, I should say, standpoint, and now it's just kind of a way of life, so it's a little bit more accepted.
(inaudible). Okay, next one?
This is public traffic services program. We receive funding from them every year. I kinda brought the wrong glass this night, so I'll do the best I can. Thirty-four thousand, thirty-four thousand, if I stand back far enough, if she holds the favors, I could, yeah, that's right. Thirty-four thousand nine hundred dollars. This is just to supplement some traffic enforcement that we have. They have some regulations that, you know, certain days we deploy manpower, and they fund it, obviously, for traffic enforcement.
Any questions? Second, I'll favor. Thank you.
Yep, the last one is our annual GIVE, GIVE award from DCJS. Again, I'll do the best I can, if I hold it. The total grant is $785,275, of which the city of Schenectady receives $354,142. I attached a budget to this. This goes for some personnel costs, mostly personnel costs, and also some overtime costs associated with reduction of gun violence, and that's what GIVE stands for. So, any case that has a nexus to guns or gun violence, we use, we use these resources towards, so. This, this grant here is written by, between the DA's office, the probation sheriffs and police department, so.
I don't know if this is still there, but it's been immediately had words with the anti-gun violence, kind of with the sheriff department, or whatever. There are a lot of these, you know, (inaudible). I don't think I've ever seen outside of the (inaudible).
Not in this particular, they have supplemental grants, and we've had some research partners receiving, but not so much for what you're talking about. They're very restrictive on this. This is a program that's been, this used to be impact, it's been around for 14, 15 years, and then they folded under what GIVE, I wish I could tell you what the acronym stands for as they stand here, what GIVE stands for, it's in the paperwork. No, they're pretty, pretty rigid on what they allow and what they don't, and the private sector kind of, it doesn't spill into that, other than research partners, so.
So GIVE is done with all five (inaudible).
Thank you. Yes, it is.
Any questions? I'll go second, on favor.
Thank you very much.
Anything else to come before public safety? Second, on favor. We're adjourned.
Go to city development, please.
Okay, so we're gonna open city planning and development, and the first item on the agenda.
It's on this side.
I didn't see you come in.
Yeah, sorry. Came out of nowhere.
We got her, we got her for ya.
All right. Kristen.
Thank you. So, as you're all probably familiar with, each year we do the consolidated annual performance and evaluation report, the CAPE, that we submit to (inaudible) 30 days after the close of the federal fiscal year. So we've been putting that report together, there's a draft of it online, and it's been available around the city at different locations. We are just looking to call for a public hearing to hear any comments on this report, and would also just like to highlight some of the main things. In, in the 2018 year, we established, we were able to establish the neighborhood revitalization strategy, and we're working in conjunction with our housing partners and the land bank to do demolition projects and also redevelopment. Some, some figures from our sub recipients, better neighborhoods, 54 clients received housing counseling, and 22 clients were able to purchase homes. Construction skills training, 34 participants enrolled and completed OSHA EPA, 15 small construction businesses received construction management training, community land trust, 12 homeowners received assistance with repairs and rehab, and 20 individuals received housing counseling. We had a number of youth programs that really were successful in training and providing entertainment and activities for the youth, especially throughout the summer. So just kind of wanted to highlight some of those things, some of the different resources that are being leveraged to create meaningful change in our community. So, yeah, I encourage everyone to have a look at the draft report, and we, yeah, we would like to just call for that public hearing on the 23rd.
Thank you so much. All right, this transfer of SURA.
So, the city has completed part of its tax foreclosure of the 2017 tax liens. We received an order for default judgment from the courts, and we recorded the deed taking 92 properties through the foreclosure. I included in your packet a copy of that deed. We're looking now to transfer those properties to SURA, and it's something that we do annually with our foreclosure, for various purposes, for various reasons.
All favor? Aye. Thank you.
Can I have a read on?
No.
That's what I thought he was gonna do, you know.
Motion to recess. All favor?
Aye.
Thank you. To recess.
Health and Recreation, who loves that? Is that (inaudible)?
No, no.
Can we move it to another?
Yeah, we'll have to do that. We'll put it over to, what, Public Service Utility, is that all right? Okay, so we'll pop it down there.
Sure.
Thank you.
Sound of the plan.
Public Service Utility, over.
Call the order of Public Service and Utility, and I guess we decided, I didn't see the agenda.
Yes, we did.
The ceremony resolution, the second annual, no greater than 13, 12, so who can speak of that?
Health.
I think, I think it was annual, annually? I think it was, it was permission (inaudible) as the second one. Okay. All right. It's the second annual, I can (inaudible). All right, I'll second, I'll go to favor. Aye. Okay, next award bid and contract, the city of, the city of Schenectady Street Improvement Program, called 2019. Ms. Long?
Thank you. Thank you. Yep?
We had some leftover funding this year after our first paving program, so it was decided to put out a second fall paving program. This paving program is to pave a couple of streets priority-wise in the city, specifically in the stockade where national grid is wrapped up, Union Street, Front Street, Washington, a couple possibly other streets if we have some time to clean that up in time for the winter. These are priority streets for our street crews to have done. And additionally, there's some secondary streets that we're going to be putting off till next year most likely because of the time. We're gonna see what we can get done after this meeting. I just wanted to make sure, you know, if we go forward with it. We're gonna be meeting with the Luizy Brothers. Just so you look, Luizy Brothers is new to, to me at least, in the city. Typically, for the last seven years that I've been here, we've been rotating between Calanan and Empire. We put out a much tighter bid this year for the second time. We learned some things from the first one. We got three bids, Luizy, Luizy, Calanan, and Newcastle. The first and second bid were separated by $10,000, which is less than a half of a percent. So, they were tight bids. It's actually the tightest bid we've ever had for this size, to have two bids come down to $10,000 of a $1.7 million bid. So, even though we have not worked with Luizy, we do have a third-party inspector onboard who has worked with them in the past. We're always looking to bring new people onboard, like we talked about, with regards to the Ardsley Road project, how we only had the one bid on that, so we're, you know, looking forward to moving forward with them. And then, we'll talk about that on the next, but this also includes the DeCamp project. So, for right now, what I wanted to do is make sure that they kind of stayed separate. Sam and I discussed leaving these two things separately, was we'd move forward with the awards to Luizy Brothers for the contract that would include this work, and then have a separate discussion about DeCamp, as that had the call for public hearing with the petitions and things like that, so we kind of moved those separately but equally. So, if you have any questions on it, feel free to answer them.
Could you just give the names of the streets, actually, I know you mentioned, and if you don't have to...
I don't have them right in front of me.
That's fine.
I can send them out. We have a map, we have a list, yeah, it was all in the, in the bid package, I can send that out. Yeah, and it was, like I said, it was broken down, the priorities are some of the, those were the prior reunion, and then we moved to different priorities for some others, just to make sure we, we covered what we said we were gonna cover.
I know the stockade has been very interested in the sidewalk program. They submitted to go in conjunction with (inaudible).
Not yet. They have not submitted any kind of petitions, but the stockade is not as similar to DeCamp. We'd also have to have a really more of a grassroots discussion with them, because they have what we call buffer, what they'll call furniture zone, so really, it would come down to how we view that, because it would be, I would view the stockade a little closer to an Ardsley, where we wouldn't necessarily have to rip up the curb and the sidewalk to do the road, whereas DeCamp, it's the whole reason we have to do everything all at once. But it's very complicated, because some people like having in the stockade. Some people do like a grassed area, some people have decorative brick, some people have a stone, there's a lot of different areas as you go down in the stockade, and that's something that we'll have to work forward, work with them on, is if we do do, come and take out the curb, what we're actually putting into that particular area, and if we want to put that into the assessment.
(inaudible) down there for those poor people, and there's so many that park on the streets, it's just been, it's just been had a heck of a... Mr. Paulman?
Still on the stockade, while you're paving, any chance of getting national grid to fix the stones and bricks that have been displaced or been (inaudible).
Where they've done their gas services?
Yeah.
We, I can look, I know of one in particular, I've been trying not to go down that road of individual gas services, but we, I can, I mean, of course, I know the people there, so we can try.
Thank you.
Yeah, we've had that with a couple, we just had a gentleman come over from Union Street to discuss his bricks. They're just not getting done the, to the, but it's, trying to not get to that, to that micromanaging level, but I understand that it does reflect on us.
Any other questions? I'll second, I'll go to favor. Aye. Okay, the second item of discussion, sidewalk improvement petition, funded by special assessment, and this is for DeCamp Avenue.
Taking one pass down, sure. So I'm passing out, this is a very similar sheet to what you saw for Ardsley, just so that you can compare it to what you had for Ardsley, which was given out at the last committee meeting. A little different, just because it's a bigger program, but what we did do is we did break it out and assess things, so if you were to look, I have both here, I know that you might not. The mobilization, that is actually one-third of the mobilization, we're not assessing all the mobilization, just a percentage that is equal to it. Similarly, the sidewalk, everything is proportional to the bid, and if you work all your way down, you get the cost to the residents as $83.55 per lineal foot, and then you have the costs on the right of what it would actually equate to in the total cost. And just for perspective, the cost to Ardsley Road per lineal foot was $82.29, so it's a difference of one and a half percent. So, I'm pretty confident in the numbers, they are right where we are, you know, where we're at $3,300 on average for 40 feet, we were thinking $4,000 for 40 feet, so we did hit that, you know, savings. The city is absorbing the cost, I hate to use the word absorbing, but that's the best word I can think of, for, you know, the curbing of it, because we do supply and install curb where we can. So this is the sidewalks, and you can see that the total, the total share that they have is $165,000. So, you know, like what we always talk about is, you know, partners in progress, that we like to say, things moving forward, you know, the residents of DeCamp are looking to put in $165,000 to improve their street, and while it's not the, the whole thing, I mean, it's not insignificant, I would never say that, you know, whereas some streets have gotten this, where the residents weren't gonna put up that much money. And I'm confident in the, in the prices, we will have testing, we have an inspector, we'll be carrying that all over. The only difference, I will say, is that I had to make an, a little bit of an executive order, and I have been working with the properties, I've been sending emails out, and I've been coordinating with the residents of DeCamp, on this work is going to happen in the spring, not in the fall. The reason being is, we would not get out there with these dates until October, the concrete wouldn't get installed till probably November 15th, and it would be green, fresh green, and if we get salt, or spray, or anything on it, it's gonna fail. And it's too much of an investment. Also, I, I had it saying November, but also I didn't want to, they may raise the price to get it done that quickly, and by raising the price to get it done that quickly, you're not getting the value that we hope for. So if we're not getting the value, and we're not getting the product that we want and the quality, I pushed it out, I talked with the residents, their biggest concern was, well, is it really gonna get done? And I said, well, we're gonna award it. I'm gonna meet with them, we're gonna have a contract, we're gonna award it, it's going to get done, so.
So are they gonna honor this price?
This was in the bid, that they would do this work in the spring. So it was stipulated in the bid that this work would be done in the spring, done by the date. So they're aware of that, same, similarly with Union, there, there was a break of work that needs to get done this year, which was Union, Front, work that can push off to next year, which was this, so that we can get a jumpstart on next year with some of it. But, you know, I really wanted to show, like I said, the fellow residents on DeCamp, and show that we're committed to this, that, you know, things, it got a little long with the public hearing and going through this for the first time, you know, but I think that we're finding our feet with it, and we're gonna get faster and more efficient as we go forward. But, I, I think it's a good start.
Any other questions? I'll take a motion. I'll second, I'll go to favor.
Very good. Thank you. Just clarification, so you're approving the creation of a special assessment district and a contract, the award, awarding a bid and a contract to the contractor as laid out on here?
Yes.
Be two separate, just.
Me, one and two? No? We move forward for the second?
The second.
So do you need another motion? Okay. All right, third item on the agenda is award for contracts for the North Ferry Street Pump Station Project. Mr. LaFong?
Yes, sir. Good evening.
On August 7th, the city received bids for the construction of a new North Ferry Street Pump Station, based on rebuilding both the city and our consultant, Club Harbor and Associates. We are looking to, for, to award these contracts in the amount of $20,728,000, and it would be for the four prime contractors. Jersey Construction is the general contractor at $18,160,000. Schenectady Hardware and Electric, for electrical, at $1,134,000. Colette Mechanical, for heating, HVAC, $1,219,000, and Colette Mechanical for the plumbing, lowest responsible bidder, $215,000. As you're aware, the, the city's been talking about rebuilding this pump station, or constructing a new pump station, for several years now. It will replace the old pump station, it will go up to an elevation of 236 for flood proofing, everything will be elevated to protect it from ice jams and future flooding. It's in conjunction with the Forest Main project that's currently going on, a 30-inch forest main, from the pump station to the wastewater treatment plant.
(inaudible) done by spring 2020, which is the upgrades to the wastewater treatment plant to handle the additional (inaudible).
Just one, did Andrew Kennedy say that this is gonna be finished by spring 2020?
No. There's the wastewater treatment plant, it was construction out, that was finished, and the next would be the pipe coming from the pump station to the plant, the final, the one year to construct the pump station, which will pump the flow to the new forest main that's being installed now, and to the wastewater treatment plant. So everything will be done approximately by the end of 2020.
By the end of 2020.
And that's based on whether this winter, what they can do with the pump station, if it's ice jams, things like that.
Yep. Any other questions? I'll take a motion.
So, do you keep moving on?
While they're on one, (inaudible).
Okay.
I'll second, I'll go to favor. Aye.
Thank you. Good evening. Good evening, sir.
Okay, next item on the agenda is ceremonial resolution for Hispanic Heritage Month, which is the middle of September, it started on 15th, but middle of October, so just want to do a resolution that generally do yearly to recognize that. All for favor? Aye. And this was just reviewed for the public hearing for the CCA, excuse me, the Community Choice Aggregation of (inaudible). So this, we already have this public hearing? No, we're calling for this, okay, this one, so this is just a placeholder basis? Okay. Yes.
I just wanna, for, for the people listening at home, I just wanna remind them, this is a very important public hearing for them. This is about if the city were to move to a kind of co-op for electricity, they would automatically be enrolled in this new electric program, unless they act it out. So it really is something for the public to pay attention to, come down to the public hearing, let us know if they're comfortable with it or not, if they have any questions before the public hearing, see where the council members out, but it really will affect every single resident in the city of Schenectady. So this is an important one, and just, I guess I wanna make a little bit more of a note of it, that we need to hear residents of the city.
Okay, so very neat topic for public hearings, you. And also, this is also review of the ceremonial resolution for friendship, on the anniversary, we actually passed it out to the committee weeks ago, Mr. Matos is going to be present, well, it's gonna be passed, the full council this coming day, and presented on October 13th, at the, at their actual service for that, on the (inaudible). So, is there anything else to come before Public Service and Utility? Motion for yours? I'll second that, I'll go to favor. Aye. We're adjourned.
Although, there's a finance made, first item on the agenda is the lease and purchase agreements of fire apparatus. (inaudible).
Council President, Council.
What we're bringing to, to you today is, is we like to have an agreement for the finance and purchasing of the two custom pumpers and the 100-foot aerial platform. We're going through a national, our national alliance consortium, so we're picking back, piggyback on the contract that's been, already been awarded, that's under the Sourcewell Contract number, which is referenced in your material there. We're looking to have the lease purchase agreement through leasing to financing, that we, they had the most reasonable, had the most, lowest rate at 2.9%, and the, the best thing about them is the prepay discount that they're offering, because they're willing to pay upfront, the cost of these pumpers, which give us an $84,000 discount on the pumpers. As you can see on, on that, on the deal, it's a, it's a five-year deal. The only change is gonna be, the first payment date is gonna be January of 2021, instead of December of 2020. The reason why we're moving so fast on this, this year, even because our, our trucks that we're replacing are not due until December of 2020, is that now the manufacturing of the fire trucks are over 14 months, so we, we need to put the, this manufacturing, we need to put the, the purchase deal to the manufacturer as soon as possible, be able to have it ready for when our other trucks are, are due to come off. I brought Chief Senical here, if you need to have any questions for him about the need of the trucks.
Are there any questions?
So, what's, sorry, what's the, what's the life expectancy of pumpers that are left that you are taking out of service?
Okay, so, the, quick history on this is, over 20 years ago, when we, we got rid of our rescue rigs, the engine companies became doing several more calls a day, so that put quite a stress on our apparatus, to where they were constantly broke down, we didn't have anything to go to as a spare, liability became an issue, where we can't put our people in burning buildings unless we have equipment that's gonna be able to support them, which brings us to the leasing. This is, I believe, our 21st or 2nd year we've been doing this, so this actually is, is part of our cycle, this isn't anything that we're out of schedule with, if you will. But what we, we leased these vehicles for five years, and the, the nice thing is, again, with the cost of labor being $140, $150 an hour, with the NFPA requirements, with
of a vehicle that's used as much as we use it, it's, it's worked for us, you know, for 20 years plus. Actually, we have Albany and other departments that we've talked to, we've held meetings, we have to see how, you know, how we do it, how we operate due to, again, the newer vehicles, when you buy a vehicle now, they want to sell you a warranty because of the cost of labor. So, at any rate, this is part of our, a cycle basically that we've been doing for 20-plus years.
Should some of this? I can't call those in favor? Next item on the agenda is Mr. Carrari with the call for a public hearing.
As you all know, we're right across right now.
Struggling through the budget for 2020. You know, we're working with the mayor right now, putting on the final touches. And what we're requesting here is for a budget, a hearing, a public hearing for the, the budget that the mayor is going to hand to you October 1st, I believe, right? So, this is the public hearing, after we, he sends it out, they'll have the public get a chance to talk about it, and brings it back to you, to have you guys discuss how you want to handle it.
Questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I'll vote in favor. Okay, wanted to reopen the planning and development?
Motion to go in executive session.
All in favor? We're in executive session.